It's time. The curtain is rising. All right. We're going to go ahead and call the Tuesday, May 7th, meeting to order. We're going to start with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and members of the armed forces, followed by an invocation by Deacon Freddie Wolfherk of the Progressive Civic League of Gifford, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Laura Moss. If everybody would please rise.
Dear Lord, our prayer is clear. Our prayer is serious. Hear our prayer, please, O Lord. Let thy will be done in every facet and every aspect of our lives. We can't do it without you. We must realize that only through your guidance that we must come humbly as we submit ourselves unto you. We ask for your protection of our families, our first responders, the government officials at every level, whether they serve local, state, federal, or any other position of authority. We pray for those individuals who are in war-torn countries around the world, as well as those in the United States who we find themselves in turmoil and unrest on our college and university campuses. Here we are, asking for your guidance in your midst. I trust and believe that your will and your way and that those things that we ask for through faith shall be given unto him that believes. In the master's name of Jesus, we pray this morning. Amen.
May being Military Appreciation Month, I would like to offer a special thanks to our veterans in the audience and our veteran standing here, as well as active duty and Gold Star families. Thank you all. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let me just get settled here. Commissioners, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Madam Chair-
Yes. Yep, everything is on here.
Seeing none, motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we will move on to proclamations and presentations. Our first is a proclamation recognizing national correctional officers and employees, which will be presented by Commissioner Lour to Sheriff Flowers. Commissioner Lour, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome, Sheriff and team.
Good morning.
It is certainly an honor and a pleasure for me to read this proclamation recognizing the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2024, as National Correction Officers and Employees Week. Whereas in 1984, President Ronald Reagan signed Proclamation 5187, creating National Correctional Officers Week. In 1996, the United States Senate officially changed the name of the week to National Correction Officers and Employees Week. The first full week in May is recognized as National Corrections Correction Officers and Employees Week to honor the work of the correctional officers and the correctional personnel nationwide. Whereas in Indian River County, the staff of correctional officers, nurses, civilian correction assistants, and support staff have served in increasingly complex and demanding professional way, where they are called to fill simultaneously custodial, supervisory, and counseling roles. Whereas the work of correctional officer is correctional personnel comes with a huge responsibility to maintain public safety and to help the others. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the week of May 5th through May 11th recognizes National Correction Officers Week, signed by all five county commissioners. Eric?
Awesome. Sheriff, good morning. Thank you.
Good group.
Absolutely amazing group behind me. And I want to take a moment. Thank you guys for taking time out of your meeting to recognize our corrections, folks, but I want to recognize one special corrections deputy. Deputy Brittany Rudolph recently won Corrections Deputy of the Year for all of the Treasure Coast and Palm Beaches. We were in attendance at a meeting down in Palm Beach at PGA National, and she won Corrections Deputy of the Year for all of those areas. Think about what happens in Palm Beach, Martin, St. Lucie, Okeechobee, all those areas, and she won. And so congratulations to Brittany. She's absolutely amazing, does an incredible job. So, in front of those folks, I got a few minutes to say some words. And the thing that I mentioned is, most of the awards that go out in that room are to law enforcement, and most of the people in the room are in law enforcement. And, you know, we are very we are very well-loved in this community. And when we go out places, people say, "Thank you for your service." And they'll buy us a cup of coffee, or a meal, or they want to take care of us in some way. And these folks behind me are our corrections deputies who go to work every single day. They don't interact with the public in any way. Every one of us, you, Sheriff Lour, Commissioner Flesher, you guys, you had it. You had that. Thank you for your service. These guys don't get that on a daily basis. And so, the inmates aren't thanking them. The community's not thanking them. So, thank you guys for pausing for a moment. And thank you for everyone who showed up today to recognize these folks because they truly deserve it. They're heroes. They're first responders. They do an amazing job keeping our folks, our community, safe every single day, and they deserve the recognition. So, thank you for taking time to do it.
Madam Chair. Also, what I think sometimes the public doesn't recognize, it's a 24-hour facility. I mean, there's toilets flushing, doors opening. It's a full-time deal unlike probably any other place in the county.
It's a small city.
It is.
Really is.
I used to say it was the largest gated community in the county. Nice gates.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
It's the only shot you're going to get, a mugshot. Group mugshot.
Thank you. All right. Our next proclamation is going to be designating May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month. This will be presented by myself, to Dr. Phil Cromer and Amy Wagner with the Mental Health Association, as well as Tracy Hernandez with Sun Coast Mental Health. So if you guys want to come on up, I'll read the proclamation. This is a proclamation recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2024. Whereas, mental health is key to overall wellness, as mental health influences decision-making, behavior, and consequently, physical health. And whereas, nationally, one in four adults suffers from a diagnosable mental health disorder in any given year, and in Florida, 63% of those adults did not receive treatment in the past year. And whereas, a growing number of youth in the United States experience feelings of anxiety, hopelessness, and sadness. And in fact, about 20% of all teens suffer from depression before they reach adulthood. And whereas, in 2024, more than 17% of children and adults continue to lack adequate medical insurance coverage for essential mental health services. And Florida is ranked 46th out of 50 states with access to mental health care. And whereas, social stigma, financial barriers, and limited awareness are the primary obstacles to getting help. And as community leaders, we must prepare for an increase in demand on services through education, outreach, and ever greater access to care to ensure our community's overall health. And whereas, it is the duty of each and every one of us to provide continued and consistent access to mental health care resources. And whereas, the commissioners of Indian River County strive to promote a community who supports mental wellness, including greater access to treatment, increasing educational tools and resources for our citizens, and continually supporting those citizens with mental health opportunities. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the Board recognizes May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month, adopted the 7th day of May, and signed by all five county commissioners. And I know that you guys have a lot going on in the community, and I'd be happy to give you a few minutes to talk about it. And then, Dr. Phil and Amy, I want you guys to talk about some of the new fun things that, not fun, but new resources. That was a bad way to, that was a bad way to say it, but the new resources you're bringing to the community as well.
I will start. Thank you, commissioners. It's good to see you again. I'm Tracy Hernandez with Sun Coast Mental Health Center, a leading mental and behavioral health provider, offering a holistic approach to mental health care through community-based and family-centered services for children, adults, and families in Indian River County and throughout the Treasure Coast. It's my privilege and pleasure to be here today to accept this proclamation with other community partners for Mental Health Awareness Month. There's a growing mental health crisis in our country and our communities, and it's significantly impacting youth, with 20% of children and adolescents experiencing a mental, emotional, developmental, or behavioral disorder. At Sun Coast Mental Health Center, where 74% of our clients are youth, we're seeing an increase in referrals for anxiety and depression. As we strive to meet the growing need for mental health services in our community, we continue to provide therapeutic counseling, targeted case management, and psychiatric treatment to more than 1,300 clients every month, including hundreds of students at more than 80 schools in our four-county area. Here in Indian River County, we provide services in 20 local schools, and 419 local residents are on a path to mental wellness thanks to our dedicated team of professionals. For 25 years, Sun Coast has been serving the community and promoting mental wellness, offering hope, healing, and change to all who seek our services. We recognize now more than ever the importance of funding and awareness to ensure our commitment to the one in four adults and one in five youth who may need our services and support. In addition to this proclamation and for our part in advancing advocacy and awareness, we just held our second annual Bridges to a Brighter Future Bridge Walk on May 4th, where 150 walkers from across the Treasure Coast joined us in bridging the way to mental wellness. On behalf of those whose lives we've changed and for those who still need our help, sincere thanks to all of you for participating in this community effort to empower individuals, engage families, and inspire communities. Thank you again.
Hello, and thank you for the proclamation. You know, at the MHA, we try to do a lot with a little. Our staff has grown. We have the walk-in center, which is free from 9:00 to 5:00, so anyone can come in and get a free mental health screening. But as it was just said, and I'll reiterate, the need and demand for services has been growing pretty exponentially last couple of years, particularly with kids. So, we've seized an opportunity, and we've opened the MHA Parent and Child Center. Now, if you recall, UF Psychiatry used to be in our community, and that was right next to the MHA. Unfortunately, they had to leave, but we've signed a lease, and we've made that a center just for kids. It really is a gap in the community, although we do have lots of other, you know, nonprofits that kind of do not exactly the same work, but we're filling a gap in several ways. So, we're providing more individual therapeutic services, and we're also partnering with Sun Coast and Tykes to make this very unique center to treat the whole family. So, we'll be doing therapy. Tykes and teens will be providing infant mental health, so that's infant to like five or six. And Sun Coast will be doing a wraparound case management services. So, not only are we tackling the problem and the need, we want to solve this issue. So, this is going to do that. We're going to do it straight from the beginning. We're going to get to the kids early and often, and that's how we're going to make a healthier and happier Indian River County. Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate the fact that you guys are collaborating on the needs and filling that gap. I think that's a great use of resources, and we'll really start turning the dial on some of the challenges that our youth are facing and their families. If the families aren't healthy, then the kids aren't going to be. So, being able to really provide that safety net is fantastic. So-
Yeah, it's a great collaboration. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Come on up. I got proclamations for everyone. All right, if you guys want to, there's a line on the floor where the middle is. Thank you, guys. Thank you for everything. All right. Our next proclamation is recognizing the 20-year anniversary of Hibiscus Children's Village. This will be presented by Commissioner Moss to Tracy Savoye, I probably butchered that, I apologize, to receive. So if you guys want to come on up, is anybody from Hibiscus? Go ahead, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll read the words on the page in a moment. I just want to say, on a more personal note, that I attended the Blue Ribbon Luncheon, it's a fundraiser for Hibiscus, last month, as I have for many years. And during the course of that luncheon, a gentleman spoke who, Hibiscus is for at-risk children, I'll say that. So, he spoke. He's now a successful businessman, but as a child, he, it's quite a story. His father wasn't present, his mother was addicted to drugs, and had abandoned him and his siblings. And God help him, he found his way to Hibiscus, and gives all the credit for his current success to Hibiscus, and was speaking in order to pay it forward, if you will. So, thank you for that. Now, I'll read the words on the page. Proclamation: Recognizing May 2024 as the 20th anniversary of Hibiscus Children's Village. Whereas Hibiscus Children's Village is celebrating 20 years of providing life-changing services to youth in May. And whereas Hibiscus Children's Village provides safe haven to 90 abused, abandoned, and/or neglected youth annually in a group home environment. And whereas Hibiscus Children's Village helps prepare teens for successful adulthood through the Career Pathways to Independence Program, featuring graphic design, culinary instruction, and an academic achievement center. And whereas May is Mental Health Awareness Month, 50% of lifetime mental health problems start in children before the age of 14, and one in six children have a diagnosable mental health disorder, equivalent to five in every US classroom. And whereas Hibiscus Children's Center provides mental health services to over 550 children and families annually in the Hibiscus Village Shelter and in the community. And whereas Hibiscus Mental Health Services focus on helping children overcome trauma and move forward in life, and Hibiscus therapists are trauma-trained, masters-level clinicians with a wide range of experience and expertise in child and family therapy. And whereas Hibiscus Children's Center provides specialized sexual abuse treatment services to victims and their non-offending caregivers. Hibiscus is the only Department of Health sanctioned sexual abuse treatment program on the Treasure Coast. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the county recognizes the 20th anniversary of Hibiscus Children's Village and their significant accomplishments and impact on the children and residents of Indian River County, adopted the 7th day of May, 2024, by the Board of County Commissioners, Indian River County, Florida, and signed by all five commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you so much, commissioners, for having us once again this year. We truly appreciate all your support. I'd like to introduce our CEO, Matt Markley, to share a few words.
Thank you, Tracy. We flipped a coin, and I lost, though she got not to speak. But good morning. Thank you. Thank you for having us, and thank you for not making me read the proclamation. I appreciate that. Hibiscus has been in business, as Commissioner Moss said, for 20 years now on the Treasure Coast. Both at here in Viro Beach and also in Jensen Beach, Hibiscus has a facility for younger children. So, we have about 25 kids down there every day, every month, every 365 days a year. Hibiscus never closes. We're open 24/7. If a child is removed from his or her home because of abuse or neglect, and the state of Florida cannot find a placement for them, family or friends, they call Hibiscus, and we answer, as Commissioner Moss mentioned. We did have a gentleman come from Chicago a few weeks ago. He had been in Hibiscus. They found he and his siblings abandoned at a motel in Stewart 35 years ago. They brought him to Hibiscus. I can't take, we can't take credit for what this gentleman has accomplished in his life, but he does give Hibiscus a lot of the credit for what he's accomplished. Commissioner Moss heard him speak. But Hibiscus has provided 475,000 safe nights for kids on the Treasure Coast since 1985. And this year is the 20th anniversary of the village. We also, again, also have a facility called The Shelter down in Jensen, and it was opened a little earlier than the village. But Hibiscus has been around now nearly 40 years. So, thank you for the opportunity to be here today, and thank you very much for recognizing Hibiscus Village.
All right. Then our next proclamation is going to be recognizing May 12th through May 18th, 2024, as National Police Week. This will be presented by Commissioner Flesher to Sheriff Flowers.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do you have a contingent to come with you?
Good morning, again, Sheriff. Sheriff, I see you have a few of your finest here.
Couple of you came by to see you guys, couple of you.
We all sustain losses. This is the design of life, and I wanted to start it out that way because, you know, a law enforcement officer signs up to sign the check if the check needs to be written, and that's the big check. And we don't know when it's going to happen, if it's going to happen, but we always figure out why it's going to happen. You know, at any loss, people, people look- You know, at any loss, people look and they show respect to the family, three to five, seven to nine, visitation, some support. We have a wonderful community. But then, everybody goes about their lives. And in law enforcement, that just can't happen. Because not only do you have a scarred family, a changed life, you have a scarred community, a community that respects each and every one of the individuals that work here, that provide the element of safety and security that they deserve. They are the individuals that give you the best in life. And then they're affected. Even more importantly is, the individuals that are appearing before us, whether an incident happens, unfortunate incident happens inside the agency, or an agency maybe in one of the other 67 counties, or maybe in another state, our law enforcement officers are scarred. It's a loss. It's internalized. It never leaves us. I can ask the individuals if they recall having gone to a ceremony. Everybody's going to remember that they heard Amazing Grace played by a pipe. But that's not where it ends. And to all of you, we thank you for what you do. A few of us know what that feeling is when somebody's lost in the law enforcement community. And with that, we can't allow anybody to forget at all. It's not about that one week. It's about every day. So, again, we're going to ask Sheriff to talk about the wreath ceremony that is well-attended by all law enforcement officers, that's well-attended by our state attorney, civil staff, criminal staff, judges, many of us, but the community should attend. And I want to offer an open invitation to ensure that they're aware that our law enforcement community has some healing to do and we pay respect to those who have been lost in the line of duty, or not in the line of duty, but unfortunately, they're not with us on the team. So, I'm going to ask the sheriff to do that. I'll proceed with the proclamation. Recognizing May 12th through the 18th, 2024, as National Police Week, whereas there are more than 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Indian River County Sheriff's Office and the Indian River County Municipal Police Departments. And whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15th as National Police Officers' Memorial Day and the week in which the date falls upon as National Police Week. Whereas, on average, one law enforcement officer is killed in the line of duty somewhere in the United States every 54 hours. Since the first known line of duty death in 1791, more than 26,000 U.S. law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas, over the past decade, in 2013 to 2023, the average annual number of officer fatalities has been 163. In 2023, 136 law enforcement officers died in the line of duty. Additionally, 25 canines died in the line of duty. Whereas, the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund honors and remembers those recently fallen law enforcement officers who have paid the ultimate price and have given their lives to protect and serve. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that May 12th through the 18th, 2024, is recognized as National Police Week in honor of the service of law enforcement officers in our community and the communities across the nation. And May 15th is recognized as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all the fallen officers and their families. And the United States' flags shall all be flown at half-staff, duly adopted the 7th day of May 2024, and it is signed by all five county commissioners. Thank you, team. Thank you for all that you do as we sleep and work and recreate in this community and the safety that you provide. Sheriff?
Commissioner Flesher, thank you and thank you again, Commissioner, for pausing to recognize our team. As Commissioner Flesher noted, on Monday, May 13th, we will have our annual wreath placement ceremony on the steps of the courthouse. I'm confident that all of you guys will be there. We would hope that some of the public will come out. We close down the roadway in front of the courthouse. Please come out and join us. We have plenty of seats, plenty of space for everybody. I wish we had hundreds of people that come out and join us, but unfortunately, every year it seems as though it's mostly elected officials and law enforcement that are there. So, I hope the public that is watching and listening will come out and join us. This year, I had the honor of presenting and unveiling our 1986 patrol car in memory of Corporal Richard Raskowski, which we've had on display. And to your point, Commissioner Flesher, about the wounds that never heal, there's not a single person behind me, myself included, who was working that September day in 1986 when Corporal Richard Raskowski was killed. But I'll tell you, I've spent more time this year reaching out to the governor and the governor's office to ensure that William Reeves, who killed Corporal Richard Raskowski in the line of duty, is put to death. He was sentenced to death almost 40 years ago. He's still on death row. So, my call this Police Week is that we, as a community, rally together and make that call for the governor to finally end this. He's exhausted all of his appeals. It's time for our community to heal. It's the line of duty death that we recognize every year. Let's put this guy to death. And so, anybody that's out there that's listening, watching, you have contacts with the governor's office, that's my call this year. Let's honor Corporal Raskowski by finally showing that Florida is a place where people who kill police won't be tolerated. So, thank you, guys, for pausing. Thank you for remembering. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Glad to hear it.
I was, but not here.
Pierce? Nah, he wasn't here. Pierce wasn't standing there. I think he's like 89. I think he's 89. Ken's like 89. Ken, what year did you start? 89?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven?
Sheriff, do you want the proclamation? Do you want this?
Commissioner Moss, she can't see you, but hang on one second.
Sheriff, once again, it's 10:00 a.m. on Monday.
10:00 a.m. on Monday.
Thanks, Nick.
Hey, man. Good to see you. All right. With that, we're going to move on to approval of the minutes. We have two batches, March 5th and March 19th, for approval. I have a motion by Commissioner Laura and a second by Commissioner Flesher. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. The informational items are attached. And with that, we'll move on to consent. Would anybody like to pull anything from consent? Anybody from the public wishing to pull anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Madam Chair, move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Flesher. I'll be happy to second that. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we will move on to our public hearing, which is the Hope for Family Centers' request for special exception use and major site plan approval for expansion of an existing residential treatment center. Welcome. And this is not quasi-judicial, so I do not have to swear everybody in. Correct, Bill?
Proceed.
Just checking. I'm almost done with my coffee, so I'm doing better. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Good morning, Chairman, and members of the Board of County Commissioners. I'm happy to present to you this next request for special exception use for the Hope for Family Centers, which is a really good nonprofit that provides an extreme need here in the county and across the state, as well as homelessness is something that we really need to address. They really do a great job. For the record, my name is Patrick Murphy. I'm a senior planner with the Planning and Development Services. And the site is located at 720 Fourth Street, which is in the vicinity northeast of the intersection of Fourth Street and Old Dixie Highway. The facility's been there for a number of years, and through the gracious donations of our residents and business owners, they've been able to raise the funds in order to expand this facility and provide more service to our community. Aerial map shows the layout of the existing facility within its surroundings. You'll see Fourth Street to the north, excuse me, Fourth Street to the south, Fourth Place to the north, Old Dixie to the west. A little bit to the east is Old Dixie Highway, excuse me, US 1. On the site plan, we delve a little bit deeper. You'll see that the existing buildings on the white, it's on the left side, it's a little grayed out. There are two buildings there that are connected. They have 23 existing units. In the center top is going to be their new administration office building, and then the two darker gray buildings to the east and south are going to house 29 new residential units. Also to the right, there is a new parking area being created, which is going to have 48 existing spaces, which meets the demands of these parking requirements. On the traffic circulation plan, you will see full access driveway to the north, that exits Fourth Place, a full access driveway to the south, exiting Fourth Street. There are sidewalks that interconnect all of the buildings on site and the two parking lots. Your stormwater plan, there are two new dry retention areas that are being proposed. They're interconnected with stormwater pipes and catch basins. In terms of heavy outflow, the water will outfall to an existing canal on the north side of Fourth Place. On your landscape plan, they're going to be putting in a 20-foot-wide type-C buffer along both roads, Fourth Place and Fourth Street. The road buffer will have a four-foot-high opaque feature. There's about a half a dozen existing specimen trees in the center of the site that are all being protected. They're even maneuvering a sidewalk around a tree in order to keep it. So, they did a really good job at incorporating existing vegetation and then planting new vegetation to really make this a very attractive site. Improvements and other conditions, this site is located in the other corridor's overlay district. The building elevations have been approved by staff as far as the colors and the roof design. The residential treatment centers in CH zoning district for which this property is owned must adhere to the specific land use criteria that is found in Section 971 286 of the county's Land Development Regulations. Through the site plan review, we found that all of these items have been met or even exceeded with this design. The proposed plans are at-site plan approval, which has allowed them to move forward to public hearings. At its meeting, March 28, 2024, Planning and Zoning Commission voted 6-0 to recommend that the BCC grant major site plan and special exception use approval with the conditions that we have recommended in our staff report. That brings us to staff recommendation. One of the conditions we had, because this is a major site plan, they're required to put a sidewalk along the road frontage. There's already an existing sidewalk on Fourth Street. However, rather than put a sidewalk on Fourth Place, because that road dead-ends to the east, they worked with our public works director and decided that it was a better bang for your buck to put that sidewalk along Old Dixie Highway where there isn't one now, and it will also allow for an existing bus stop to be able to get sidewalk pedestrian access down to the intersection. They're to install all perimeter landscape buffers and site lighting and construct all other improvements as a condition of the report. With that, staff's available to answer any questions the board may have. I also believe that Marty Mercuto, the executive director, is in attendance as well.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff? No? Marty, did you want to say anything? Not to put you on the spot, but since you're here, tell us what's going on with this. This is exciting.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us today. This has been years of labor of love, and I've just been fortunate enough to come in at the tail end and help to bring it to light and to move forward. We know, I actually had the opportunity to attend the homeless conference in San Francisco this year, and I was very shocked at the amount of shelters that were out there that separated the families. Dad went one way and mom and the children went another. And I saw the trauma that was reported in the data from that type of model to help homeless families. So, here in Indian River County with this model and being able to expand, we are doing groundbreaking work to keep families together as they combat homelessness and become sustainable. I appreciate the support of the community, of everyone that has supported us, our donors, and we are just excited to move forward and to continue this work and to continue to keep families together. Thank you.
How many families do you serve now and how many will the expansion allow you to serve?
Right now, we have, it's cold and flu season, so we're very sick at the shelter. So, we have 21 rooms, but we keep one room open for, I call it sick bay. With the expansion, it'll have 20 more rooms, so we'll have 41 rooms and then nine transitional apartments. And those transitional apartments are important because if a family qualifies for Habitat for Humanity, they don't really have anywhere to go while they're waiting on that. So, we're going to work with Habitat to allow them to utilize those apartments. Or families that have higher barriers, such as evictions that they need to get past, or health problems, those apartments will be available for families in our community to heal or build a new home or whatever they need to do to become sustainable.
Thank you. That's doubling your ability to serve, which is fantastic.
Yes, ma'am, and we're proud to do it.
Yeah, the apartments are such a key to that sustainability. Very excited about this project. Yes. Bill, did you have something?
No, just reminding you to open the.
Oh, I will. Okay. Public hearing is open. Anybody that wishes to speak on this item, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Sorry. I always forget what my Ps and Qs are up here for public hearings.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else from the public? No? Seeing none? I will close the public hearing. Yes, Commissioner Flesher.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. We look forward to the project.
Thank you, President.
All right. The next item on our agenda is a request to speak from Curtis Collison regarding the Mary Snyder Golf Tournament.
Okay, who's first?
Good morning, Commissioners. Well, it's 10 years. Hard to believe. I remember the first golf tournament, we were worried whether or not we could get 60 people to even field the course. Now, you guys, with all your help, we have two courses. Over 260 golfers last year raised over $30,000. Since the inception of the golf tournament that I kind of brought with me from the Veterans Council, we have raised almost $300,000 for our veterans here in Indian River County. A lot of people don't realize that because I keep this tournament very low as far as cost at $80, and it's the community that comes out and supports us. And we could not do it without you all. And I sincerely mean that, and the community between Mike, every one of you I've seen at the tournament, I know that Mr. Laura, I'm sure that you'll be out there this year. I know Joe Goff's, Mr. I know Joe Goffes, Mr. Zito Goffes. And we'd love to see you guys back out there again. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to a couple of people that have a lot more information than I have. Call them the brains. And we're going to go ahead and let them talk for a few minutes and I'll finish up.
Thank you, Curtis. I'll have to tell my husband you called me the brain. That's good. So thank you all very much for allowing us to come today to spend a few minutes with you. I know I saw some of you at the golf tournament in the last couple of years, and we appreciate that very much. My background is healthcare. I've been in healthcare leadership roles for over fifty years. I'm now retired and living in Vero Beach, and I love it here. So thank you for all of that, because you're making Vero Beach and Indian River County good every day. Because I have family members who are veterans who have since passed away. My grandfather went to Vietnam twice. It's just been tough to think about veterans not getting what they need. Housing, jobs, food, help with utilities, whatever it might be. We owe them the thank you by helping them to get it. Since I retired, I met Curtis. I met his wife Linda and Vic Diaz. And we now are part of that volunteer group to put together the golf tournament. I love seeing the number of players. I love seeing the results. Have a good time there. If you haven't been, you don't realize how much fun it is. My husband plays in it every year. My son played in it a couple of years, and I'm going to try to get him to play again this year as well. It has now, as you heard from Curtis, been ten years. We've had two-hundred veterans housed as a result of what has been done here. There have been a thousand claims for VA benefits that have been pushed through and helped as a result of the work, because we provide support to multiple veterans groups. The proceeds go to all veterans in Indian River County. And if you've ever talked to a veteran, which I did, I was the director of the West Palm Beach VA for four-and-a-half years and spent quite a bit of time talking to them. It's heartbreaking to think that individuals who served our country would not have a home, would not have a job, would not have food for their family. So we all have an obligation to help with that. And I'm hoping that what we do at this golf tournament will be able to continue. So we are happy that you have helped us. We hope that you will continue to do that in the future. I can't think of anything more meaningful. My favorite job out of all the fifty years was at the VA. Veterans really understand what you can do, can't do, and they know that when you're trying to help, and they thank you for it. So thank you very much. It's a meaningful job. It's meaningful for what you all are doing, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll just be brief. It's Craig Wasco. I know many of you, and thank you for the opportunity of us being here. We, I'm part of a support group to the golf tournament. I represent the veterans of Indian River County. We, as Donna said, our mission is to house veterans to the facility on Royal Palm Boulevard, St. Arthur's Court. We did all the furnishings there. The building was paid for by a lady. Anyway, our main mission is to get benefits for veterans and to, we hope, we're working on a project right now of funding little houses for veterans in a community. Problem is there, we've got to find the land and so forth and so on. But anyway, it's in the works. But that's basically what the golf tournament supports, all veterans efforts here in the county. So I won't take any more of your time, but thank you.
Okay. So we have renamed the tournament as of five years, four-and-a-half, five years ago, to the Mary Snyder Veterans Golf Tournament. I think the majority of you all know who Mary Snyder was. She ran all the libraries and was an avid, avid veteran supporter, even though she stayed behind the scenes. So Mary plays big parts, so we went and changed it. The tournament is June fifteenth. I have it the day before Father's Day purposely, so that most of the fathers are here, because we have a lot of retired in our community, so they're usually here and the kids come and see them. Or they can come and bring them on the golf course and teach them, teach the grandkids how to golf or teach your kids how to golf. As I said, I keep it very minimal. The cost is eighty dollars. I know it's five dollars more than last year, but we try to keep it very, very low without going in the hole. That includes your cart, that includes your luncheon. And without you, we couldn't have a luncheon, because with two-hundred-and-sixty golfers, anybody that knows the nineteenth hole at Sandridge knows that that nineteenth hole could never support two-hundred-and-sixty. And I think all of you know that. You've been working on that thing for a while, so. It's June fifteenth. We're going to have a shotgun start. Registration's at zero-seven-hundred, seven o'clock in the morning. Eight o'clock shotgun start. And it is at Sandridge. And please, 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 try to get there as early as possible, because with two-hundred-and-sixty, we do have a lot of people working, but it's still got to have check-ins and do it in a timely fashion. And I'm going to give you a couple. Email address is vviirc.org. And with that, you can go ahead and press, "I want to play for the tournament, in the tournament, I want to sponsor the tournament, I want to do this", you know, and read more about the tournament if you like. That will get you there. And then a couple of phone numbers. I have, most of you know probably Kim Pilger. So Kim, we got at nine-seven-zero-nine-eight-eight-nine-one-two-five. My telephone number, seven-seven-two-seven-seven-zero-four-five-zero-seven. Just call, and if we don't answer, just leave a message. Say you want to play in the tournament, want to sponsor the tournament. And we couldn't do it again without you all. You guys are a huge help behind the scenes. And I think all of you know it. Mike and his staff and Bella and everybody and Scott do an incredible job for us. And for that, all of our veterans in the community, thank you. Any questions?
I've already signed up.
Signed up?
Amount of effort that you put into it. And once again, even with the car show as well, and helping veterans to help veterans, you make it easy. You just make it easy to say, what can we do?
That's very kind of you. And. And I know that all y'all do too. And for that, we thank you very much, Commissioner. And it's very well received, and thank you for that. And as I said, my wife is, she's so mad at me for doing it again this year, as the majority of you know. I fought a hell of a, something that almost got me, but it didn't get me. So my biggest fight was with my wife, but that's done and over. But she's ready to come in, make some chocolates, have a good time, let's make some money for her vets to support it.
You should listen to Linda, but we thank you for not listening to Linda.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Curtis, thanks for all you do. It's great. We appreciate it. It's been a great event. Every year that I've been in, and it's been many years since I have not missed it, that, like I said, Mr. Zito and a few others are probably signed up and ready to tee it off.
Roger that. Any questions, don't hesitate to call me. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. The next item is a public notice item. Mr. DeBrol, I think that's all you.
Meeting coming up on Tuesday, May twenty-first. Two thousand four in the county commission chambers, and that will be at nine AM to discuss the Award of the Solid Waste and Recyclables Collection Services, RFP. I hand it back to the chair.
Thank you so much. All right. That brings us to twelve E one, anchoring limitation area update. Welcome.
Good morning. Melissa Eisenberg, Natural Resources, Senior Lagoon Environmental Specialist. I'm going to give an update on our anchoring limitation area and hopefully get some board direction on, as we're taking, moving this forward. So just a reminder about anchoring limitations. This was a statute that was passed in twenty-twenty-one with the state allowing for limited anchoring in specified zones within a county. It gives no more than forty-five days. So it's not an anchoring exclusion zone, but a limitation zone. So on day forty-four, if someone wanted to move a mile away, they could move, come back on day forty-six and start that period over again. So it's forty-five consecutive days in a six-month period. If they stay within that over the forty-five days, there is the risk of a citation from law enforcement. Failure to comply to move the vessel after that could include impoundment for up to forty-eight hours. And three citations within a twelve-month period can actually lead to declaring the vessel a public nuisance or a derelict vessel. There are some exclusions to that. Say we have inclement weather. A person can remain within the limited area until the weather has passed. Or if they have any type of mechanical failure, they can also stay within that zone for up to three days while they're working on getting the boat repaired. So there are some key steps into determining an anchoring limitation area. You want to, the county is the only entity that can actually pursue the establishment of an ALA. It needs to be adjacent to an urban area. There needs to be residential docking and significant recreational boating traffic. Can't exceed more than ten percent of the delineated navigal, in fact, waterways. And it cannot include any type of mooring field or marina, and it has to be less than a hundred acres. So each zone or ALA within the county has to be less than a hundred acres. So there are some steps that we're developing in the language, and that includes the need or requirement for an interlocal agreement between a town or city that is requesting an ALA outside of the county's jurisdiction. We have to notify FWC thirty days before the public hearing so that they can publish the public hearing notice through FWC, as well as the county needs to publish one to change the ordinance language and then hold the public hearing. Once adopted, there are specific requirements for signs and buoys that are set forth by FWC, and that's going to require a series of permits from FWC, Army Corps, DEP, and the Coast Guard, meeting all the requirements for Army Corps, depending on where those ALAs are and adjacent to the ICW or the setback, which is a hundred feet on either side. There are requirements for buoys and anchors, and we have to establish it so that a boater knows they're entering or exiting an ALA each time they're moving into a zone. And those buoys also have to be anchored with a stiff chain to keep them from breaking free or moving an entanglement from marine mammals. So when this reached my desk, the first thing I did was start out with talking with FWC law enforcement to determine if we had any areas within the county. And at that time, no areas were identified within the jurisdiction of the county to include in an ALA. But we did have the City of Sebastian, the Town of Indian River Shores, and the City of Vero Beach request by passing resolutions to establish ALAs within their own jurisdictions. So the City of Sebastian has three zones or areas totaling two-hundred-and-ninety-one acres. Town of Indian River Shores has two-hundred-and-ten acres, once again, three zones. And then we have the City of Vero Beach that has three areas, but technically it breaks up into six areas because of the separation in Area Two as well as in Area One. So going through this, there are some financial estimate considerations that we need to look at. And that is the fact that we have, every sign has to, one piling has to have two signs on it. One for entering the ALA, one for exiting the ALA. We have to have regulatory marker buoys, anchors. And so these estimates were provided to me last fall, and I have since been told that they might be on the lower end, even my high estimate, because I've been told that piling establishment and signs are now running about six thousand, and I was originally told four thousand. And that a regulatory buoy, along with installation, may be upwards of three thousand dollars per buoy to be installed. We did receive signage from the City of Jacksonville, who had their first ALA established, and so their signs have already been approved by FWC. So we have those schematics there that are very helpful to know exactly what FWC is looking for with the signage. So after talking with FWC and meeting with them, signs are going to be required at entry points on each side of an ALA and buoys about every hundred-and-seventy-five yards. Now, FWC is the entity that's going to determine exact placement of each sign and buoy. So this could be excessive. It could also be, there could be more signs or buoys required. This is just the estimate that I received from them. So this is for the City of Sebastian, and you can see anywhere from sixty-three thousand to seventy-eight thousand for the initial installation. We also have Indian River Shores. So this is Area One, much less because this is adjacent directly to the land. And so this is going to prevent that need for signs directly adjacent to those docks. And then this is Areas Two and Three, and we have a total of about forty-three thousand to fifty thousand dollars estimated for the signs and buoys for this area. Then we have the City of Vero Beach, which actually has three zones. We have the area that's adjacent to, or near the old power plant and the community just to the south of it, as well as the area that is adjacent to the zone where Town of Indian River Shores had the cut through Law Street. We have the area there as well, which is a known area. We do receive a lot of boats being left in that zone. So it's a good area to have some anchoring limitation in. And in this area, in addition to the Riverside Park area, where a lot of people also anchor their boats during the wintertime, we have a total of a hundred-and-seven thousand to a hundred-and-twenty-six thousand. So we're looking at a total of two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand to two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand based on estimates I was given in the fall. So counties with ALA ordinances that have already been successful in getting the ordinances passed, as well as moving forward with FWC. We have Duval County, who has the consolidated government. They've been providing us with information of their signs and the requirements they're having to meet through their permits. Broward County, with the City of Hollywood, entered into an interlocal agreement to have the city to install, maintain, and enforce the ALA within the jurisdiction. Same for Pinellas County and the City of Clearwater. We have Brevard County, that's also requiring the City of Melbourne to install, maintain signs and buoys and enforce the ALA. And then the City of Venice within Sarasota County has also entered into an interlocal agreement to do the same. So we're bringing two options as we're moving forward with interlocal agreement language. So the first option is that the county would act as the permitee with FWC, which is required by the statute for the signs and buoys. But the municipalities are responsible for all of their permits, as well as the installation and maintenance moving forward with putting in the signs and buoys. But the county would help to reimburse the municipalities fifty percent of the costs associated with that installation of the piling signs and buoys. The municipalities would bear the responsibility of the maintenance of the signs and buoys and associated costs. If in the event that they failed to monitor, enforce, or keep up with those signs or buoys, the county would reserve the right to remove the ALA from the actual ordinance, as well as the ALA map. Some considerations is that the county will need to work with the municipalities and FWC for sign content, as well as piling and buoy placement. And the county would be the permit holder for FWC, not the municipalities, because that is the requirement on the statute. The county would also reimburse fifty percent of the installation costs, and that funding would come from the Florida Boating Fund, Lagoon, and Other Contractual Services account. This is just including four thousand per piling, five hundred to a thousand dollars per buoy, which I now know that that has gone up in the new year. Option two, the county would still serve as the permitee for the signs and buoys for FWC. FWC, but we would also be the permittee for the Army Corps, DEP, and the Coast Guard. And the county would then invoice the municipalities for all costs associated with that effort. The county would handle all installation. They would handle the installation of the piling, signs, and buoys within the ALA, and the county would invoice the municipalities for all costs associated with that effort. We would also be responsible for monitoring and maintaining the piling signs and buoys, and the county would invoice the cities for the costs associated with that effort as well. But each municipality would be the primary enforcement agency within that jurisdictional limit, and the municipalities would cover a hundred percent of the costs associated with the installation of piling, signs, buoys located within their jurisdiction. And the same clause applies that if the municipality fails to reimburse the county, the county would be able to remove that area from the map and the ordinance. Some considerations with option two is that surveys will need to be conducted and easements will need to be granted for the submerged land if the county is the permit holder for Army Corps, DEP, and the Coast Guard. Additional funding requirements would be forty-two thousand to seventy-five thousand for design permitting, bid paperwork, as well as mobilization and construction oversight through a consulting agency. This does not include the required surveys for the easements. If installation and maintenance is the responsibility of the county, the county will assume all liability associated with the infrastructure if a buoy or sign is missing and that causes a potential accident. So the funding estimate for this is two hundred and fifty-five thousand to two hundred and ninety-six thousand, which would come from the same Florida Boating Fund, Lagoon and Contractual Services account. And of course, this does not include the survey requirements. So the costs associated with establishing the ALAs and the signs, pilings, and buoys is substantial. So we're seeking guidance from the Board of County Commissioners to determine which ILA provisions we should include and out of these two options which have been presented.
Thank you. Is there any questions of staff? Yes.
Why the, the survey in the second option instead of the?
So we need an easement, and DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers are going to require surveys to, for the easement to be completed so that the easement can be granted to the county. Since this land is with technically submerged land within the jurisdiction of one of the towns or cities, we have to have an easement and a survey to accompany it. A survey may also be required by Army Corps depending on the location of the channel. So Army Corps has told me that if they believe that the ALA might be within the hundred-foot setback of the ICW, they will require a survey of the piling pre-deployment and post-deployment.
I think that's probably a good idea. I was just wondering why, why it wasn't an option one and option two. The only, the only really change I see, because each municipality will serve as primary enforcement within their, within their area, and both options.
They will be a primary enforcement, yes.
Okay. And then the, the survey, and then it's just, we're, we're kind of responsible for heading up the whole project, and they're billed, we bill them for, for what we do, such as the pilings and stuff like that.
Under option two, that's how it would work. They would be billed.
We probably have, not to give y'all more to do, but we probably have more avail, more availability for staff to handle this project than, than the cities do with regards to it. I mean, I'm, I'm kind of good with either one, but I'm, I'm just leaning to, to option two because of the, the survey, which probably needs to be done, and the fact that, that I think it would be more expeditious for us to probably head it up and work with the cities and then just bill them for it and, and have it all come out after the project's done. That's just my opinion, but I'm up for further discussion to see what y'all want to do.
Madam Chair. So otherwise, option one, there would not have to be a survey for easements because the county would be the conduit for the municipalities.
Correct, because the, they would be the permit holders for Army Corps and DEP, and we would not, we would not need those easements.
As far as the contact with the municipalities, and I do see Councilman here from Sebastian, I see representation from the shores. We do have, yes, and cooperation from all of our municipalities. You've established all of that, so the relationship and guidelines are being set now for a receptive group.
Yes, this has been shared. The, the interlocal agreement one was an option that was presented, and then they came back with the interlocal agreement two option, so a second option. And so we're, we're discussing this, which is why we're bringing it to, to you, so that a decision can be made about what's best to move forward with the ALA.
There has been no negative response from the municipalities whatsoever. I meant, well.
No, I don't.
There was one municipality that really doesn't have a.
Our anchoring limitations would be more marsh-based.
Yeah, but you know.
More ditches, smaller, smaller boats.
Those who have anchoring arenas have all been very supportive.
So, so the, the cities have been very supportive and bringing and working with me. Initially, we had some issues with some of the maps. They've been very helpful in getting me adjusted maps so that we can continue moving forward with this. I have spoken to other counties that have already established their ALAs. Not all of them have their signs and buoys in place. That is an extensive process to move forward with. Jacksonville was the first municipality to get their ALA passed, as well as get their signs approved by FWC. So they're in that process now. They do have a much smaller area than we do as they're just doing it in one of the rivers.
And other municipalities and, and other areas that you're familiar with, the, which would have been the preferred avenue to address this, whether it be option one or two?
Are you talking about the other counties that, that have passed it? So the other counties have gone completely different. They've gone with a third option, which is that not only do the municipalities requesting the ALA, seek their own permits outside of FWC, they also are responsible for a hundred percent of the costs, installation, and maintenance and enforcement of their ALA within their jurisdiction.
And that's not something we're looking at.
No, Madam Chair.
Why? Out of curiosity, just out of curiosity.
So I made that decision, and it's because this, the anchoring limitation area is one of the items that's noted in our Indian River Lagoon Management Plan, and thought a partnership would be the best way to do this. I will tell you, my preference is option one. One, it's less cost. Two, the county doesn't deal with the liability issues. And three, the timing is driven by each of the municipalities. Those that are prepared and ready to move forward can do so at their own pace in a more expeditious manner, if they need to take time to plan it, rather than the county doing it and trying to coordinate all three municipalities. Maybe one's not ready to move forward at that immediate. And plus, I still think there's might be some, as we submit this to FWC, as it relates to one of the anchoring limitation areas like the City of Sebastian, where there's might be some questions between the, the narrow sliver that's between the, the three large areas, you know, to just comply. So I think, I think they all would run on their own path, and one wouldn't hold up the others.
Could a, could a municipality opt out?
They don't have to. They, they've all, we asked them to adopt a resolution of support for this. They all did. They provided a map, but they would have to enter into ILA in order to do this. If the county establishes the fact that we can do an anchoring limitation area, then a municipality can or cannot. They're not required to, but they can. And, but that's where the county, since it's a, one of the programs or plan, projects that's identified on Lagoon Management Plan, we're stepping up in, you know, fifty percent of the initial costs, and then the repair and maintenance and the enforcement. I will also add, spoke with the sheriff, they would also aid in enforcement, and FWC has the ability to do that as well.
So I, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to.
So, once again, so Orchid and Vero and Sebastian and the shores are all on board with what, whatever is going to travel.
Yes, well, the Town of Orchid didn't pass a resolution, but Indian River Shores, City of Sebastian, the City of Vero Beach did. So they passed the resolutions in twenty twenty-three.
Very well. And with that, you know, Madam Chair reminded that before he retired, a Commissioner O'Brien had spearheaded this interest and moved it forward, and I see he's here today.
Yep, I know he wants to say a few words.
Okay.
When we open it up, he will be first, first at the podium. I just, for, so for clarification, we have, we're setting up a process where the cities can take advantage of the anchoring limitation options. We, as a county, do not have any areas in the unincorporated county identified where we would be setting up our own anchoring limitation areas, but each of the cities have identified areas that they would like to avail themselves of this process.
Correct.
And if we don't set up a program, they will not be able to do it on their own.
Correct. The county is the only one who can establish an ALA.
So from my perspective, and I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Ehrman, I think the easiest way to travel down this path is option one. It doesn't take up our staff time, and it gives the autonomy to the cities to set up those areas in the fashion and time that they need to. Plus, when you're talking about permitting with multiple different agencies, if you're kind of a third-party permitter, it just adds, it adds to the difficulty of working with those agencies, because you're, you're kind of a pass-through. Where it's not, if it's not necessary, necessary, I think we're just adding an additional layer of difficulty and confusion. I do agree with your perspective that we should be cooperating with everybody to address the lagoon issue. So cooperating on the funding, I think, is completely appropriate because this will turn the dial on, on goals that we want to meet as a county, and the cities are part of the county. So it's a great collaborative project. I just think for the expeditiousness of it, it, option one allows more flexibility and less regulatory oversight. Plus, it puts the people, the cities in charge of the cities' programs, and we can then, you know, focus on some other stuff that we might need to do.
Commissioner Ehrman, I think you had a question for somebody.
Maybe Melissa or John, you might answer this. It says, option two, the request of preferences by, you know, while option two is a request of preference by our municipal partners, you know, their additional considerations, which is the survey. I'm good either way, as long as this gets done. I'm, I'm thinking, actually opposite from you, I think it might be more expedition, expeditiously done by us being the lead agency and then being reimbursed for this, because I think the, the, the survey is an important part of where you establish your, your anchoring points. I think that's, that's, that's a, I mean, I think that's like the whole key, because you may not want one here because it's, it's not good, and you want one here because you have good areas for, for anchoring. I, I think we'd be missing a, a, an option there, even though there is an increased cost for this, but I think it's something that needs to be done. But it apparently is the preferred preference by our municipal partners, so I, I don't know. I guess I'll ask you. I mean, I'm, am I speaking Chinese here or something?
No, we sent out the, the options to our municipal partners, and City of Vero Beach responded, and they provided an alternative. And then, you know, and I initially said, yeah, well, I think we're fine with that. And then it came to light the, the issues of, you know, if the county becomes the permittee for the individual anchoring limitation areas, we would have to have these easements. And then the other thing I'd go back to is each municipality would be able to do it at their own pace, rather than if the county's trying to do and coordinate, collaborate, and if one holds up, does that impact the others? So that's why we're recommending, I would recommend one.
That way, that, that, an option one, this possibly happened, that, that one of the cities could get busy and, and kind of hold it up, and our staff would be seeing this process through a little bit faster, and it should go a little bit smoother, in my opinion, because they could keep asking them, you know, hey, we need this information so we can move ahead. Again, I, I'm really, I'm good as long as it gets done either way, but I just think option two seems to, I, I think it'll be better with those elements that are included within it, even though it is more money.
Duly noted. Commissioner Moss?
Yes, um, thank you. It, it's, it's one lagoon, and we, we need to protect it. I know that on the maps and with regard to legal boundaries, it belongs, if you will, to different municipalities, but it's our lagoon. It affects all of us. I don't want to see this falter in any way. I think this is really important to do this. I think we'll go a long way protecting the lagoon and also hopefully further the partnerships with the municipalities to work together, all of us on the lagoon. So I'm fine with number two, even though it is more expensive, and I, I thank the county administrator for working on this. And after we've heard public comment, prepare to make a motion on number two.
All right. At this point, anybody from the public? I know there's one. We defer to the Commissioner Emeritus.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. I'd like to, first off, strongly encourage you, and I think I'm hearing very good encouraging words from you all, to move forward with the ALA ordinance. I don't know if you've been on the water lately, but there has been a proliferation of boats anchoring everywhere, and it's not just in our county. I see it down there, down there by the Fort Pierce Inlet, up at the Sebastian Inlet. It's just really getting totally out of hand. City of Sebastian, I know when I first talked to them two years ago, they did not want to be engaged at that time, but now they are, so I think they're seeing that problem going. If you drive over the Barber Bridge going east and look to the south, there's always a cluster of boats right there by the fire station, and four or five more in the little bay there by the Riverside Memorial Island. So they're just all over, and one of those boats off Vero there is now a derelict vessel. It's half sunk. One caveat, I'd just say there's no county areas yet, okay? These things are going to be like roaches. Once you clean them out of one area, they're going to find another area. Where they are now is the most convenient. They're located where they can take their dinghy to Riverside Cafe or the Marina, catch the go-line to go to Walmart, get their supplies, things like that. So the further away they are, the less desirable, but it doesn't mean they won't go there someday. So I'd just say no county areas yet. And I do want to make sure that we realize and the public understands, this is not an anti-boating thing at all. It really is helping to improve the lagoon. And I'm sure you all know that if you have a Coast Guard Type One or Two sanitation device aboard your vessel, you can discharge directly into the waters where you're anchored. And that's the big problem, because these devices treat for E. coli, but not for nitrogen phosphorus, which we all know now is the biggest problem in our lagoon. So it's really, it's not an anti-boating ordinance. It's trying to keep the lagoon clean and prevent those discharges directly into our lagoon waters. I'm not going to speak on the interlocals. I'll let you all decide that. That's the, that's the tough question. But I would like to speak to some of the loopholes in the current statute and ask that you might consider some amendments and add it to your legislative priorities to work on next coming year. Because, as I mentioned, boaters will find a way to exploit any loophole. If there's a way they can get around it, they will. And if you're going to spend two to three hundred thousand dollars on the ALAs, I would think you'd want to make sure all the loopholes are closed so the ordinance is effective. And the first one is, just like, I think Melissa mentioned it earlier, a boater could be anchored in an ALA for forty-four days. And on day forty-five, they pull up anchor, they motor a mile away, drop anchor for the night, and they come back in, drop anchor, and that resets the forty-five-day clock. And they can do that indefinitely, on and on and on. So they would just keep coming back and back and back. They would have to move one night every month and a half, which is not a big deal. They probably want to run their diesel engine anyway. So I would recommend that we change consecutive, forty-five consecutive days in a six-month period to forty-five cumulative days in a six-month period. And this way, once their forty-five days is up, they have to move on. They can't come back a day later and, and reset the clock. So I would request that we, we lobby to change consecutive to cumulative. Secondly, the, the statute doesn't really specify when the six-month window begins. So a boat could be anchored up for forty-five days, and, and we come and tell them, hey, you need to move on, and they will know, my six-month window started four and a half months ago, and now tomorrow starts my next six-month window, so I can stay another forty-five days. So the proposed change there would be to say that the, the six-month window starts the first day the boat is identified within the ALA. So that'd be, that day, their first day they're anchored, that's when when the six-month window starts, not four and a half months earlier. The 45-day limit should apply to all anchoring limitation areas within the county. You, I think you'll have close to 12 different ones proposed. Is that it? Nine or 12? Okay. So, with nine or 12, that boater doesn't have to go far to get into a new ALA and start again his 45-day clock. He could just go from the, from Vero, one of Vero's, one of the shores, back to one of Vero's, back to the shores and just leapfrog all over the place and never really leave the lagoon and still be discharging daily. So, the 45-day limit should apply to all anchored limitation areas within the county. And then I would like to encourage you all to reach out to FAC. As Melissa reported, there's other counties that are going through this now, and I think if we get FAC to kind of help, that might get all the counties on board and, and make it better for everybody and make it easier for counties to follow in our footsteps. I believe one of the original sponsors of this bill several years ago was from Jacksonville. And we might want to reach out, as you all know, former county attorney Dylan Rheingold is now working for the City of Jacksonville again. And Dylan might be a good connection to get with that legislator, to speak about amending his original bill for, for these issues. And that's pretty much all I have. I just want you all to think about those amendments to the statute and to, to work on them. And I did have a question, if I may, for Eric or Melissa. Couple of years ago, DEP was looking at applying to the EPA for no discharge zones for the two aquatic reserves that make up most of the lagoon. Is there, is that moving forward? Are we getting that or do we have a status on it?
I've asked that question and I don't have an update yet.
Okay.
On where it is.
Okay.
That was something they were discussing.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all Commissioners. It's good to see you all again. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for doing this.
And if you have any questions, I'll be here. But, uh, thank you. And I really urge you to move forward with this. I think it's necessary and a very good thing to do.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Brien.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else from the public? Wonderful. Welcome.
Madam Chair, County Commissioners, good morning. Keith Drewett, Clean Water Coalition of Indian River County. First of all, a big shout-out firstly to Commissioner O'Brien for kicking this off, I think now two or three years ago. And again, to Eric and Melissa who've done a terrific job in stewarding, shepherding this process through its various stages. So, big thanks to all of you and to your staff for moving this forward. Peter O'Brien said some very powerful words about the state of the lagoon and the state of the derelict vessels out on the water last week. The situation from here to Fort Pierce inlet and beyond is, is severe. We have three sunken vessels very close to the city marina. You can see one from the bridge as you go over towards the island on the right-hand side. Been there for many, many years. And Commissioner O'Brien's comments about the regulations are on target, but I would just say one thing. Don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. This is a very good piece of legislation. We should embrace it. Think about this as early intervention. If a vessel sinks, you've got diesel, petrol, oil, hydraulic fluid, green sanitation device, whatever chemicals come out of the upholstery, the foam. This gives us a tool if we are diligent with our enforcement to intervene before that happens. And Melissa will tell you when she gets the, the bids for removing the vessels, if the vessel is sunk as opposed to floating. Floating is just a tow. Sunk is a barge and a crane and a diver. So, this is early intervention, is good policy and is good economically. So, thank you again so much for moving forward with this. We were and are large supporters and let's get it done, as Commissioner Hearn said. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? There we go. Awesome. Welcome.
Madam Chair, nobody says awesome when I approach a microphone, so thank you. Commissioner, Mr. Decanich, Mr. DeBrol. To be brief, again, I'm glad you're all sitting down when I said I'll be brief. I appreciate Mr. Decanich's position. If I were in that chair, thankfully I'm not, but if I were in that chair, I would articulate the same things from an administrative standpoint. That being said, we do, on behalf of the town, the town does request option two. And, and, and really, I, I would take up or amplify Commissioner Ehrman's point about the expeditious nature of, of the county doing it. I think a single source, single point of contact for all of this would be better and more expeditious. Certainly, the town has a lot of challenges in that regard, just relative to staff and potentially needing outside vendors to assist us with some of those, some of those items. Secondly, I think from a administrative and operational standpoint, economy of scale will certainly, probably benefit us economically. I know this isn't an enormous, you know, project, but the size of the project, I think, I think scale would, would, would benefit the, the bidding and the economic piece of it. And then finally, of course, the town, you know, can assure the, the commission that reimbursement is not going to be an issue. We don't want, you know, our, our residents, our county taxpayers also, but we don't want the county, V C B, the town, to be out anything because it's a project that we definitely want to do. And I do recall having very early meetings with Commissioner O'Brien and, and Mayor Foley on this, on this topic a number of years ago. So, with that, I will just finally note that the town is fully able to do enforcement on this, you know, based on our, you know, our vessel and, you know, and our personnel. So, with that, absent any questions, I just appreciate the time, consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you. Anybody else? Welcome.
Good morning. Vanessa Chambers, Assistant City Engineer for the City of Vero Beach. I'd first like to say thank you to all of you as well as the staff for this because it's a very important effort. And regardless which option is selected today, we are very grateful for everybody's effort on this. The city would request our preference of option two being considered, performing the permitting installation and maintenance of the signing and marking for the anchoring limitation areas and billing the municipalities for 100% of the cost. It would be similar to how the traffic signals operate now. The county maintains them and any traffic signals that are the responsibility of the municipality, they pay for those costs. The county spearheading this would produce a more consistent signage project, which would be more navigable and easier for boaters to understand and use. It would prevent all the municipalities from having to hire separate consultants and all have separate permits, everything getting installed at different times. So, that would be our preference. We also are able to enforce our area and we fully support paying 100% of our costs of, and having the county, if possible, to kind of oversee for the entire community of Indian River County instead of à la carte. So, with that, I will say thank you again and I really appreciate your consideration. We're just grateful, either way it goes, that it's getting to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I have a question. If there's nobody else that wants to speak on this, for, I guess, Eric or Melissa. One of the issues that the cities are gravitating towards option two is because there's staffing issues on, on their side. So, honestly, do we even have the staff to be able to pull this off and still focus on the rest of our lagoon plan?
We are currently hiring an additional lagoon environmental specialist, but right now you're looking at the only lagoon environmental specialist within the lagoon division. And of course, we have Eric. So, everybody else within the department is working on other things.
So, even if, but even if we hire somebody?
They would be new coming on board, so they'd have to step in doing other, other duties and learn the lagoon plan to move forward.
And I guess that's my, that's my concern. I understand that, I mean, if the cities want to take on 100% of the, of the reimbursement, I mean, that's fantastic, but we still have, we still have staffing issues as well. And the, this is one portion of the lagoon plan. The lagoon plan is like 13 chapters long with multiple projects within each chapter.
Yes.
I would just submit to you that we would work with Eric to probably hire a consulting engineer and project manager because we don't have the bandwidth with just Melissa on board.
I mean, I, I would assume that's what we would do too, and that's what the cities would do. But again, a consultant has to be provided oversight and have some kind of direction. And you don't just turn a consultant loose willy-nilly on the county without it impacting our staff time. So, I just really, I have, I don't know if there's a, an option somewhere in the middle. I get not wanting to do three different projects with three different consultants from each of the cities, but I also have a lot of concerns about our staff's ability to be able to pull this off without it impacting the other things that we need to do. I mean, not to put you on the spot, but what wouldn't we be able to do if we were, how long, what would be our timeframe for this? If we were to start and we had the new person on board, just like?
As the county administrator had mentioned though, we would be seeking an outside consultant to assist us in the process, even with or without a new person coming on board. A new person coming on board would need to be brought up to speed. So, initially, the, the monitoring and the oversight of the contractor, that would, the consultant firm, would be through Melissa and myself. You know, it would take a while to get a new person up to speed. And again, this is a large project, you know, lagoon-wide. So, to have a new person assume that kind of responsibility would be a ways down the road. So, the, the initial effort would be through Melissa and myself. I know a concern was raised with regards to uniformity of signs, that Melissa had addressed in the presentation, that the signs would be something that the county, since we'd have the responsibility for the zone, would be something that the county would have approved through F W C signage. So, it would be a uniform sign, but again, what we're focused on right now is the way to implement this, whether it'd be done through the county, you know, initiated an effort from the county or whether the individual entities. Again, as Melissa had mentioned though, there is a liability. If the county does put the, the markers and the buoys in those areas with easements, it, it does become a county asset at that point or a liability for the county. So, so.
Mr. DeBrol, can you speak to the liability issue? Is that different from the example that was used on traffic signals or something of that nature?
No, I don't think so. I, I think it would still be covered under our sovereign immunity as far as, you know, the, the limits of liability that we would face for something happening. And, you know, as long as the buoys are correctly installed and the signage is correctly installed, I don't know what kind of negligence there would be if some other boater would hit one of them and caused it to be submerged or danger. I don't know where our liability would come in if we wouldn't know about it. If somebody told us about it and then we wouldn't do anything, there is some liability. Aside from that, I, I don't think that we're at great risk.
Okay. Thank you. Last question. So, option one, cities would do everything basically under the umbrella. We would permit with F W C for the signage language that would all be consistent. They would do the work. We would reimburse them 50% generally. Option two, still, we would coordinate on the signage. We would do all the work. We would require easements and all the other third-party agreements to get the permitting done. And then the cities would reimburse us 100%.
Yes.
So, even though option two costs more, it costs more for us, but we will get all of that back from the cities when this is done?
For the cost of pilings. And we would be responsible for, for handling the installation. So, they would pay us back 100%, yes.
For the installation, the piling and the permitting?
Yes, for, for all of it.
For all of it?
Yes.
And with option two?
That is my understanding.
With option two, we would be paying dollars in?
Well, we would pay for option two, they would reimburse us.
I mean, for option one, I'm sorry.
Yes, we would be paying 50%.
And you guys feel like a consultant would be brought in and that would still allow you to do all the other work that you need to do without great hardship?
That's a, that's a difficult question to answer since I'm working on.
I know I'm putting you on the spot.
I'm working on four or five projects right now, so it's very, it's very difficult.
Well, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but at the same time, if you want us to make a decision that's going to be good for the organization and the county, I think we need to know what won't be able to happen or will be able to happen. We need to have a realistic expectation.
Sure.
Because, because we keep putting projects on and just hiring people and consultants, and that's projects that can't be done too. And there's a cost associated with that.
So, it would tax the department for, to have me doing consultant oversight while not being able to work on other projects, particularly during the construction and installation phase, since I would also need to have oversight during that time.
So, I just want everybody to understand the full parameters of the decision.
I just would like to remind the board, right now you're providing the direction for the purposes of drafting the ordinance that would include the ILA provisions. So, this had still come back. We'll update the figures and, as I said, we could also, you know, get a, at least kind of get a quote from one of our continuing services providers, you know, to see what their cost would be, you know, to manage the project if they, if you're going to go to option number two.
Okay. And, I'm sorry, last question, then I'll let you, Commissioner Pleschler. How long is the ILA drafting expected to take?
Oh, I, we have an ILA drafted and, and what I did is I just sent the, the core provisions to each of the managers with the respective municipalities.
So, it won't take long to get that done and then they would approve it at their meetings and sign?
The option two was born out of their, their response to my email to them.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Pleschler?
Oh, Ms. Ehrman?
Madam Chair, I, I could see us, I, I want this to happen today so that we can get moving. And it does have to come back. There'll be a little bit of delay, a little bit of discussion. And, and I understand the municipalities about having to hire a consultant as well. We'll have to hire the consultant. Will the consultant's cost, the cost of the consultant be offset by the municipalities? And then we have to take the lead and, and oversee it all. I, I think in, in the larger scope, us having to commit to 50% of, of the cost will get it going quicker and also be also the opportunity for the municipalities not to have to bear so much of that expense. So, I, I agree with your original thought process and respecting all of the, the input where there, there may be a preference for option two, I can understand. And it was said that, well, from your standpoint, you know, you're, you're looking at our organization and we have a lot of things to do ahead of the road with the minimal staff. So, I, I would like to make motion, Madam Chair, for option one at this point.
Okay. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll second it. And the reason being in not only primarily the cost, but I believe that having the county as the overseer as well as correlating with our, with our lagoon plan and probably the most important is we have to trust our staff. And Eric and Melissa have suggested option one. They are the experts, experts. I certainly am not an expert in this, but I do know that when you have loyal talent and agency, you have to trust their decisions.
All right. I think, come on up. I'm sorry I missed you earlier.
Yeah, no, that's fine. That's fine. Listen, Fred Jones, City of Sebastian. Listen, I understand the position that you all are in and for us, it's the same thing. But the City of Sebastian, like Vero and Indian River shores, we support option two and you all can understand our position on that is why we're doing it. And we believe that this would provide the best overall project for the county, countywide. It would provide uniformity and reduce repeated efforts by all of the municipalities. So, this is our reason for supporting option two. So, again, I know what you all are saying. We're in that position as well, so you gotta look at your staff and look at everything and make that decision. Just telling you what our position is. So, thank you for listening.
Yes, Commissioner Moss?
I understand what, what staff is saying and that it will be a large project. That being said, my preference would be that it proceed more slowly if, if necessary, but I'm still in favor of, of option two. I just think, I think that the project as a whole is less likely to falter if we're doing it, even if it is done more slowly. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Ehrman?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm still going to stay with supporting option two for the reasons that you've heard. And also, again, I want to tell you how important I feel that the survey is, especially if you're going to establish an ILA. you're going to establish an ILA, you need to know where those ILAs are going to be. And it needs to be mapped out. And I think it makes a benefit to the lagoon where you can do it. I don't think this is going to move at a rapid pace, no matter what it is. I think our staff can handle it. We're probably, you know, we're getting an additional person. I don't think we need to keep pushing. We talk about lagoon projects all the time, and we keep pushing them back a little bit. We keep, we keep, we didn't move as fast on the, on the initial report as we wanted to, if you remember that meeting, and we got it. So we need to start moving on these things. And I think a central hub to where you have one agency coordinating with other agencies, no matter how slow or fast or what your workload is, is important in a project like this. So I will say, I will tell you, I've been supporting, I'm strongly supporting option two.
Okay. I have a que, I have a question. Is there, is there a way that we engage the consultant, but direct the consultant to work with each city's staff person, so it's a hybrid of option two and option one? So it's not as taxing on us, but there's more of a coordinated effort instead of each city engaging their own contract?
Either way, we all have to work together to, regardless of the option. There has some, to be some across the municipalities, as well as the county, to work on this together, particularly since we have to get, we have to be able to get the proper permits in place. FWC will determine signage as well as piling and buoy location. So that information has a cross between regardless of whether we're putting, installing it, or whether the cities are installing it. So there has to be a work together.
But what I'm hearing is there's some concern about the permitting process. If we are the permitter, it would be easier if the cities were the ones applying for the permits.
It would be easier for them to apply for the Army Corps, the DEP, as well as the Coast Guard permits, since the submerged land is within their jurisdiction.
So I guess my question is, is there a happy medium where we engage a consultant? The consultant works, so it's a coordinated project countywide. The consultant works with each city individually to apply for the permit, so we don't have to worry about the easements and us being the permittee, bring those back, and then the consultant coordinates the piling and, you see what I'm saying? Like, is there a medium way to, is there a happy medium to do that? Because it's either the cities or the county, but we're trying to put together a coordinated collaborative project, and that would take the onus off of staff, but it would be providing a, a hub for that information to be coordinated. But it would give the autonomy to the cities to do it, but we would be providing, we would be providing the direct, the driver for the project. Is that, am I making any sense?
You're talking about hiring basically a firm that's going to handle all of it, you know, but the county would be the one to retain, like the project, the consultant engineer, the project manager. And I mean, it would probably provide economies of scales and there'd be familiarity with the, you know, the whole process. As Melissa indicated, FDWC is going to start off with the, you know, evaluating the anchoring limitation areas. So I mean, that is a possibility, I would say. That would just a possibility because of whether...
I mean, and we could be compensated accordingly. Obviously, the cities have no problem paying for it. It's more, I just think that would take, it would allow for a unified project. It would take some of the onus and responsibility off of staff and put it back on the cities, which is kind of the concern. But it would stitch together the whole county as one project and allow it to move forward with some economies of scale. So I know that's not an option that's being presented. It's just a thought, trying to figure out how do we get the two... I want to be collaborative with the cities. The cities have said option two. For us, the best option is option one. But it seems like what they're saying and what we're saying, you could kind of do together in an option three. Throwing it out there.
Absolutely. It could, it could be done. They would still need to be the permittee though, and they would still have to be, because of that, the installation would be on the cities themselves.
Which we could help coordinate.
Right. We would coordinate that with the consultant.
With the consultant, so.
And potentially also the ultimate contractor that's selected to install the buoys, the signs. It could carry all the way through where the county serves as the prime and then coordinates with. But at the end of the day, the specific jurisdictions would have to provide the requisite information and everything that's required for the permit. I mean, you could, I mean, do a poll real quick. If it's that option, the hybrid option's a little bit better.
How long would it take us to work that option out?
It's, it'd be part of the ILA?
It'd be part of the ILA?
I mean, the alternative, if you look across the state, is the counties just agreed to adopt, establish an ILA, and none of the other counties are participating with their municipalities. We're saying, we think it's right to partner with them because it benefits the lagoon as a whole.
This option is, is as appealing.
Yeah.
And it does give a little bit of latitude. So I, option 1.5.
Yeah, it's kind of halfway between.
The thing, the matter is, is that these options have been discussed with the municipalities. Obviously, we have opinions and input. Would not we be better served in having some conversation with the municipalities and then bring this back? It's not kicking a can.
No.
It's just, but it's far more appealing. I'm still very strong on option one. But if this is about cost averaging, getting the job done, and getting it uniform, I think we should give it the opportunity.
Can, so since you're the maker of the motion, let me make a suggestion. How about that?
We change the verbiage now?
Pass. I'm just thinking outside the box here. What if we were to approve, moving forward with the ILA program and concept, and ask staff to go back to the cities with the, with the idea of option 1.5, or whatever you want to call it, and see what their input is, and then bring that back to us in the next meeting or two? So we're not holding it up, but we're giving them the opportunity for input.
Counsel legally sufficient?
There's a motion on the floor. Are you open to amending?
I, I think at this juncture, that is far more appealing than standing, standing fast with option one. So I would like to make that motion incorporated, so far as I hope the second feels the same way, that we incorporate Madam Chair's input to approve the ILA and allow staff the opportunity to work the new suggested hybrid into it. And we, and we will have an ILA.
That's fine. Is the, I'll second, you're amending your second. Very good.
So we're not voting on an option per se. We're voting on the concept. Is that what you said?
That's, that would, yes.
We're voting on the concept. I think we all want that.
Yeah, the concept of the ILA would move forward. We're all on board with that.
Okay.
Just how we figure out to get there. We'll float a new kind of hybrid option and see if the cities would be okay with that, and then bring it back.
So it'll come back to us then after that?
Yes.
Okay.
I would hope that would come back in the next couple meetings, just because I don't think it would take that long. In fact, they're all kind of here, so.
And I don't, I don't think it's sufficient.
Thank you.
Delay in the process. I don't think it's, slow it down.
We've heard from the cities, they all want to do option two. I think by doing all this, we're making it more bureaucratic and then slowing the process down. If we just go ahead and go with option two, we get reimbursed for everything. The only difference is, is that they're, that really, that we have to pay for a survey, which I'm telling you is needed when you survey the bottom, so you know where your, where your proper anchoring limitations can be. And I think we're, again, we've heard from the cities, they want, they think option two is the best option. By doing this, we're going to do what I said, because it does, this is not a fast-moving process, that we're going to slow it down even more. Let's just go with option two, and I'm sure it'll work out just fine.
I understand your concerns. I just have bigger concerns about staff time, and if there's a way we can kind of split that, it might work out faster in the long run.
I would just, again, remind the board, this is just the direction. So we could come back after meeting and talking with our municipal partners with the actual ordinance, with the preferred option in terms of the hybrid, or, you know, kind of talk with them further about this concept. So I mean, we would have an opportunity to have that discussion.
Okay. Fantastic. Anything else? Any other input?
Thank you, Stan.
All right. Seeing none. We have a motion.
What's the motion again?
The motion is to approve the anchoring limitation area program and come back with some amended proposed language for the inter-local agreement. So we're moving forward with an anchor limitation area, but we are proposing a coordinated effort that would more evenly share the staff load of establishing it. Is that...
That's correct.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Fletcher, seconded by Commissioner Lor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries forward to one with Commissioner Ehrman dissenting. Thank you. And thank you to the cities for being here and your input. We really appreciate the collaboration. And Commissioner O'Brien, thank you for always being a champion for this issue. All right, with that, is everybody okay? We only have a few more things. You guys want to break real quick, or you want to keep going? Good? All right. We'll move on to 12 H1, renewal of the effective date for the one-time free property split. Andy, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. I do have a PowerPoint here for you.
You have a PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, then we're going to need a break.
It's short.
Is it a quick?
It's quick.
Okay. It's three slides.
Yeah, it's a quick one. All right. So this is the renewal of the one-time free property split. So on July 23rd of 1983, the county subdivision ordinance took effect. After that date, you could not subdivide land without first filing a plat and also following the provisions of that ordinance. Since that time, we've allowed a one-time free split of properties, residential properties in the county. And to be eligible for this, you have to meet all of the requirements of the zoning districts. So minimum size, frontage, and widths and such. So I've got a couple examples here of properties that have actually used our one-time free split. On the left-hand side, these are agriculturally zoned properties. We call that a flag lot. And then on the right-hand side, these are, this is a residentially zoned property. That again, was a larger property, used the one-time free split in order to create two parcels. So the reason we are looking to revise this date is that, since we go back to 1983, almost all of the eligible properties that could use it have already used it. This is also one of the most common questions we get in the Planner of the Day office is, do I have the one-time free split due? And it does add value to the property. We hear from a lot of real estate agents as well on this. So what we're proposing to do is update that date to today. So basically, even if you've already used your one-time free split, you'd get another chance at it. And we would also provide a 90-day grace period so that, let's say, you've got one due and you haven't used it, we'll give you 90 days to use that initial one, and you won't lose your second one as well. Following that grace period, we would update the land development regulations just to codify this new date and say, look, May 7th, 2024 is the date going forward for the renewed one-time free split. We're also going to create a GIS layer for these properties, because how we do it now and how we've always done it is, we've got these old archaic 1970s and 80s paper maps. We pull those out, we look through them, we say, all right, is this parcel today in the same configuration it was back here? If it is, you've got the one-time free split. If it's different, you don't. So what we're going to do is, with this date renewal, we will have a GIS layer that actually shows you whether you used it or not. And ultimately, we want to make that a publicly accessible thing so that anybody can go online and just look, hey, do I have it or do I not have it? And then we'll also be posting these dates on the website. So staff's recommendation is that the board accounting commissioners approve the renewal of the one-time free split date by updating that date from July 23rd, 1983 to May 7th, 2024. And also by providing a 90-day grace period so that folks out there that haven't used it have an opportunity to come in and use it before the renewal takes effect.
Fantastic. Any questions of staff? No? I'm very excited that we will be utilizing technology on a mapping level. That would probably make everything so much more efficient.
Yes.
And easy. If there are no questions, Commissioners...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Move staff recommendation, giving the citizens the opportunity for a second bite at the app.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Fletcher with a second by Commissioner Ehrman. Any further discussion? Anybody from the public? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for the speedy PowerPoint. All right, moving on to solid waste disposal district. We have the minutes of February 20th, March 5th, and March 19th for approval.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
All right, I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is final pay to Ryan Southern, Inc. for Phase 1 Construction of Segment 3 Cell 3 Project. I have a motion by Commissioner Ehrman. I'll be happy to second that. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next is final pay to GeoSynTech for Work Order Number 1, Phase 2, Segment 3, Cell 3 Construction Contract Procurement. I have a motion by Commissioner Ehrman, and I'll be happy to second that. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And then finally, we have a final pay to GeoSynTech for Work Order Number 18, Site Preparation, Segment 3 Cell, I'm going to assume 3.
Madam Chair, approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Fletcher. We have a motion. I'll be happy to second that. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, if there's nothing else, for the good of the order, we stand adjourned.